Earlier this evening, we convened at 6:30. Moving to open. Bushnell, Mr. Albrecht, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry seven zero. Can I get certification?
Mr. Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas certify that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second. Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by, we'll go with Mr. Bushnell. Any discussion? That the School Board certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meetings required, requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry seven zero.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
I move the School Board of the City of Manassas accept the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Kara Mills as principal of Mayfield Elementary School effective July 1, 2015.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bushnell, second by Mr. Albrecht, that the School Board of the City of Manassas accepts the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Kara Mills as principal of Mayfield Intermediate Schools effective July 1, 2015. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry seven zero. Now, we'll go on to Spotlight, but first, Ms. Mills, would you like to say a few words?
Well, good evening Chairman DiMaria, members of the board, and Dr. McGork. I can see that we have many students here that are worthy of attention this evening, so I'll be brief. I just want to thank you for this opportunity. At first, I was a little bit sad to leave the Round community, and then I realized, well, I'm really not leaving the Round community, I'm just joining them a little bit later in their career. But I will say, I have enjoyed working with the very dedicated professionals at Round Elementary School, and I look forward to going into Mayfield. It's a great school, I'm gonna get in there, build a strong team, and continue the work that they have started. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. And now, we'll go on to superintendent's announcements and Spotlight.
All right.
Mrs. Rat.
That would be me.
Would be you.
Thank you Chairman DiMaria, Dr. McGork, other members of the board, good evening to you, and good evening to everyone that is here tonight to help us celebrate these wonderful recognitions that we have the honor of sharing with you tonight. First, we would like to begin with Osborne High School, which I tell you, we have so many awesome students here tonight from Osborne, so they are representing strong. Osborne High School is one of thirteen schools nationwide, selected as a 2015 Grammy Signature School, and has been awarded a cash grant for their efforts in performing arts. Osborne was one of eight schools to receive the Enterprise Award Grant totaling $5,500 to benefit its music program. The Grammy Signature School Program recognizes top U.S. public high schools that are making an outstanding commitment to music education during academic school year. The OHS Music Program includes guitar, orchestra, band, and chorus. Many of you may remember that Osborne was a semifinalist for the Signature School Competition last year, so this is a tremendous honor to have received this top-level recognition from the foundation. Tonight, we are pleased to have Stacy Rubach, who's very instrumental in helping them to apply for this prestigious award. I'm gonna ask her to come forward, she's one of our guitar teacher. We have a few students that have joined her from the orchestra, students Mick Dean and Emily Chang, guitar students. James Louvi, I'm sorry, yeah, James Louvier and Tai Chang, guitar students. And we have band students Mick Roberts and John Higgins. We'll go ahead and get a nice photo of you guys, if you all can kinda, might wanna get a little tight, yeah, there. Might have to get all rose a little bit, double up. You're gonna have to kinda double up, somebody, yeah.
Guys, double up.
Go down, gentlemen. Go down that way, yeah, yeah, yeah. Like penis, right there, and spread out. Get tight. Can you see everybody? Okay. Oh, sure. That was great.
Get a Photoshop out of front.
Okay. I bet one of the kids has a military dad. Go ahead. Yeah, hold the pose. Good, everybody? Okay, congratulations to all of you, thank you. We'll stay with the fine arts here tonight. Let's see, we have Osborne High School representation for All-State Choir. Several Osborne students were recently recognized for their sights, sight-reading ability and vocal prowess, which were demonstrated during the February audition for all eligible juniors and seniors in the state of Virginia. The following students are here tonight, along with Ms. Sarah Weaver, who is the Fine Arts Chair, so if you can come forward, Ms. Weaver, thank you. Sarah George and Lauren Pretty, who each have received the honor of being selected to participate in the 2015 All-Virginia course, if you could come forward.
Here. Let's see, Lauren.
Okay. And we have Roman Thomas, who I think is here tonight, who was named First Alternate. Maybe not, okay. All right, then we'd also like to note that the, all Osborne choirs received a rating of excellent or superior at last weekend's District Nine Assessment Concert, so congratulations to the whole Fine Arts Department. You can represent them, thank you. Oh, gosh. Let's see. Okay, we have, hmm, superior ratings for Osborne's Chamber Orchestra. The Virginia Band and Orchestra Directors Association grades music in increasing complexity from grade level one all the way up to level six. Grade-one music is music that students usually encounter in their second or third year of playing their instrument, and grade-six literature is typically music that students will play in their senior year of high school or freshman year in college orchestra. Two years ago, at the District Nine Orchestra State Assessment, the top-level Osborne Orchestra earned a superior performance on their stage performance and their sight-reading performance with grade-three music. This year, Chamber Orchestra earned all superior ratings from the three-stage judges and from their sight-reading judge with grade-five repertoire. The students have worked tremendously hard and have earned a great award that recognizes their dedication, teamwork, and musicianship. So, the orchestra is led by Mr. Austin Isaac, who cannot be here tonight. Ms. Stacy Rubach is here representing the Fine Arts Department, and we have students Mick Dean and Emily Chang, who are with her. Okay, great, thank you. And for this next award that highlights more excellence in the arts, I'm gonna ask for assistance from Mr. Bill Stevens, who works with our bands, and he's gonna explain some of the recent awards they just received.
Oh, I just wanna come up here and keep it simple, I wanna brag, we have a Metz Middle School band that went out to assessment this year and came back with a superior rating. So, if I could have the following students come on up here, could I please have Krish Patel come on up? Ethan Sorry? Josh Holt? Jackson Moore? Dylan Scott? And Troy Walker? This is a unique experience because this, for many of these students, this is their first time receiving a superior rating, and it's really tough. It is really tough, if you go out there, we talk about assessment, this is our SOL. So, ladies and gentlemen, as a group, let's go ahead and give them a round of applause for doing a fantastic job. Okay, and that's not, not quite it. I wanna go ahead and talk real quick about the All-District Honor Band. We had a few students that tried out, auditioned for the All-District Nine Honor Band, it was held at Garfield High School this past January. And from Metz Middle School, we had an eighth grader, Krish Patel, on trumpet, please come on up. And we also had a seventh grader, Troy Walker, on percussion, please come up. And since I get the honor to talk about Osborne High School and Metz Middle School, I wanna go ahead and bring up Mr. John Higgins for Osborne High School on trombone. Just to kinda put this in perspective, these are the best players in the region. We had a pretty tough area in northern Virginia, but John made the second trombone overall in the entire region of District Nine. He, this was his second year to become eligible for all-state auditions, and this is an awesome fact, this actually might be a record, John made first main audition honor band, which you have to get special permission, in sixth grade, and has been in it every year since as a senior. So, congratulations.
Congratulations, Sean. I told you, we have some awesome, awesome talent at Osborne High School, this is great. And Metz, that is correct, that is correct. Our Fine Arts Department rocks, I tell you. Okay, let's see, more from Osborne High School, our Community Action Athletes Club. The Community Action Athletes Program gives Osborne High School's student athletes the opportunity to help others. The student athletes are able to combine their dedication in the classroom and perseverance on the playing field with a desire to benefit the local community. The plan is to give back by continuing work with area hospitals, youth groups, volunteer organizations, and Manassas City Public Schools throughout the year. Student athletes also have the opportunity to initiate and implement service projects or activities with assistance and support from the Osborne Athletic Booster Club. All student athletes and/or students trying out for an Osborne sports team are eligible to participate in this program. The Community Action Athletes have helped various groups throughout the school year, including the American Legion and different church organizations. They have assisted with the Backpack Snack Attack Program, as well as three different 5K races, and the Manassas Museum Movie Night. There are approximately eighty student athletes in the club, who will ultimately volunteer over eight-hundred-and-eighty man-hours before the school year is complete. Tonight, I believe we have co-sponsors, Mr. Steve Schultz and Casey Simpson here, and several student athletes are with them, so if you are here, would you please come forward?
Megan got him straight. I'm sorry. Casey, you gotta stand up. Did she get her breath? Oh, thank you.
Next, we have a very familiar face here for recognitions, I'm gonna ask her to come forward as I talk about her. Her name is Mallory Pearson from Osborne High School. Mallory, can you come on up? Let me tell you a little bit about Mallory. She was recently recognized as a regional award recipient in the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards of 2015, presented by the Alliance for Young Artists and Writers. We've been, had the pleasure of seeing a lot of Mallory's artwork here at School Board meetings. More than 300,000 works were submitted to the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards nationwide, and only the top forty percent received some level of recognition, Gold Key, Silver Key, or Honorable Mention. Mallory's work, "It's Not a Compliment," received the Gold Key recognition. As part of this recognition, Mallory will receive a congratulatory letter, award certificate, and a Gold Key pen. Congratulations to you, Mallory, awesome. You get it?
You good?
You good? Okay, thank you for doing it, thanks. We have one more. We're going into the classroom, our Regional Science Fair. The Regional Science Fair was held Saturday, March 14th. Students from the Governor's School at Innovation Park participated in the fair and received the following recognitions for their outstanding work. In the Biochemistry category, first place, Alan Branigan, along with two other students from the Governor's School. First-place award. Engineering, third place, Will Perez, Martha Hart, and Katherine Krim. Honorable mention, Upasana and Ardhana Adukari and Linda Nguyen.
Come on, you can smile better than that.
And actually, I'm gonna get all the other students to come up with them, so we have two more groups. Environmental Science category, first place, Cameron White, along with another student from the Governor's School, Cameron here, okay. And is Hardwin Tunakero here? Okay. Cameron and Hardwin will also be competing in the International I-Sweep, which is International Sustainability Energy Engineering Environment Project, Olympia in Houston, Texas, in May, which is awesome. Congratulations to all of you. Great minds. Okay, that concludes our recognitions for this evening, thank you.
Before everybody leaves, I'd like to recognize Delegate Miller for being here. Thank you very much for supporting your school board, I'm sure that's why you were here, sir.
We're bringing it up here.
Yeah. No, thank you, thank him. Makes us look good. I think we probably do committee reports as everybody's mulling out. Do we have academics, sir? If so...
Well, no.
No?
No report.
Okay, thank you.
But two meetings in April.
Okay. Thank you. Anything on policy, Mrs. Bessky?
No report.
Education support? We're all gonna talk about it in a moment.
We had our report at one o'clock today.
Yes, we did, and I'm sure everybody will talk about it. Nothing on either? Okay. We'll get to board members' comments. I'm asking that board members not publicly express individual negative or personal judgments about MCPS staff performance outside of the formal evaluation process. Any such judgments regarding staff performance will be made only by the full board. We will start, Mr. Whedon, did you have anything?
Yeah, I'd just like to congratulate everybody that received an award tonight, I mean, they're all gone, but it's just great to see my peers doing great things in the community, and academically and outside.
It is cool, isn't it?
Yeah, it's pretty good.
It's what makes it fun sitting up here. Ms. Ball?
Uh, thank you, I just have a couple upcoming events at Osborne, the Mr. Osborne, like, talent, I guess, like, pageant thing is gonna be in April. It's really difficult to explain. And the musical will also be in April, and our talent show will be on May 2nd.
Thank you. Mrs. Purdy?
I have a couple comments, I'm gonna try to make them really quick, so I can't congratulate everybody because it'll take another half hour, but I do wanna say, well done, Osborne. I just wanna point out a couple things for those people who might not be in music. I'm gonna correct a statement, when you get a superior, it's not just passing an SOL, it's passing an SOL with advance, that's really darn impressive. When you can do sight-reading, which is playing the music, having never seen it before at a level five, that's amazing, too. We have got such amazing talent. So, I just, I just wanted to clarify, so that the people who don't play music get a sense of, this is really, really seriously incredibly talented kids that are coming up here getting these awards. I wanna congratulate Kara Mills, I've seen the great wonderful things that has been done at Round, and I think we're gonna be well-served by the talents that she's going to bring to Mayfield. And for those of you who might not have seen, the Community Action Athletes, the message on the back of their T-shirt says, "Eagles soar by lifting with others." And one of the things that I wanna point out to two parents, that the Community Action Athletes are just a small group of kids across the entire school that do community service. And it's not just community service, when they're doing things like that, they're also providing leadership. There's a, there's a well-known entrepreneur, whose name I can't remember at the moment, but he always said, "A worthy goal of leadership is to help those doing poorly to do well, and those doing well to do better." And when you are providing community service, not only are you acting with the heart of a servant, but you're also acting like a leader, because you're helping those doing poorly do well, and you're helping those doing well do better. So, I wanna thank everyone, not just the Community Action Athletes, but all of those kids at Osborne that are all throughout our community, with the hearts of servants out there, doing things to help our community do better. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for clarifying the superior rating, 'cause I didn't realize that, that they just look at music and read it and play it.
Sight-reading is not easy, it is probably the most stressful thing for musicians to do.
That's all I can do, is imagine, thank you. Mrs. Skeever?
Thank you, I have to say that it's just been a big day of wow for me. Just all of the students here, the work that we're doing in the system with the arts, the work we're doing with the Governor's School, and science, and just the talent of these kids, and the commitment of them, their teachers, their parents, it's just, it's amazing, it's, there's nothing to be said other than wow, and thank you. Secondly, I echo Ellen and the Community Action Athletes, I have personally been able to work with them, and they don't just show up to an event, they plan it, they lead it, and they serve. And I can't tell you how great that is, to have that resource in our community. Just quickly, I too would like to congratulate Kara, we're very excited about the energy she'll bring over to Mayfield. And lastly, I would be remiss, well, one more thing before that, I was able to attend, speaking of Osborne, there was a self-design artistic exhibit, and the artists there were phenomenal. I think we all wanted to buy their art as well. And Mr. Williams and I did attend, one of the best-attended GT Advisory Committee meetings, so it was great to see parents come out for that. And lastly, I just wanted to say, today was just a day of celebration. The Baldwin community, the community at large, everybody came together, a sea of faces, all of the children were there, from Baldwin, the love of the teachers, the love of the administrators, the love of this community, and just to see the end in sight, to get this Baldwin built, was just something that I was so happy to be a part of. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mrs. Bessky?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I will go along with my other colleagues and congratulate Kara on being appointed as the next principal at Mayfield, and I'm very excited for her and this opportunity. I agree, and will echo what Mrs. Purdy said, to recognize, everyone that was recognized tonight would take forever, but it's always very exciting when you see just the wonderful things that are going on at Osborne High School, and the wonderful things that our students are doing, and leading, and achieving, and it really shows how our schools are thriving, and how our students are really achieving great things, and have such great opportunity, and it makes me very proud to have this small role in, in being part of it, and being able to watch, so I'm very excited about that. And, you know, the leadership aspect of the Community Action Athletes, but of all of these students and their leadership abilities, volunteering makes you a stronger leader, and it's something that they're leading, their parents by example even, as we get more and more people involved in our community, and to make it the great place that we all know Manassas is. A couple of things that I wanted to, to recognize, I also went to the art show a week ago, this past Friday, it was, the artwork was truly amazing, it's over at the museum, I encourage people to go look at it, it, the mayor himself was like, "Is there some of these pieces you think I could buy?" And I told him, I said, "You might have a little hard, a hard time with some of the parents not being willing to give it up, but sure, you could try." It was a really great event. Tomorrow night at Metz, there's a Children's Wellness Night, that'll be from 5:00 to 7:00. Thursday at Mayfield, from 5:30 to 7:30, the Education Foundation is sponsoring a Stand Strong for Education event, there'll be vendors, food, many door prizes, and other things going on that night, so if you have the opportunity, please come out and support that event. I attend the Education Foundation meetings as the School Board representative, and the person from Nova gave me a flyer about a STEM Fest that's coming up, for anyone that might not be aware of this, it is on April the 25th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Manassas Nova Campus. The event does have free parking and free food, and fun activities for the entire family, I would like to see a great turnout. I brought this 'cause it has some really cool STEM activities, things like 3D printing, DNA activities, math games, robotics, see a human plasticized cadaver, apparently they don't have that, so if your kid's really into STEM, that sounds like a really cool event. And the groundbreaking ceremony today was, it was just amazing, I appreciate all the hard work the staff put in to make the event so wonderful, it's been so long coming, I have to say that since my daughter's four years old and started at Baldwin, they've been telling me, "Oh, the new Baldwin's coming." So, it's very exciting, since she's 22 now, that this is all gonna come to be, and it was just a really great event, a really great day of celebration for Manassas City Public Schools. It was exciting to start off my day hearing NBC Local News report that this was gonna go on today. So, it's a great day for Manassas City, and a great day for celebration, because it's been great things that are shown that are going on, so thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is that it?
That'll be it?
Oh, good. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, congratulations to Ms. Mills, looking forward to the great work she's gonna do at Mayfield. As Mrs. Skeever mentioned, I've attended the Gift and Talented Advisory Committee meeting, and it was well-attended, and glad to see parents come out and, come out and support School Board meetings. meetings. Also, I went to the art show. Art show was fabulous, so check out the art if you get a chance to go to the museum. Osborne students, they're amazing. They do so many great things, and we consistently hear from some people how our kids aren't doing certain things and how they aren't cheating certain things and where they are and what they do, and we don't hear enough about things like this. I see some proud parents here, and Mr. Higgins in the back, who sent I coached years ago. We have a great community, and we need to keep trumpeting our success stories. We don't need to, you know, paper over the things that are going wrong. We need to address those as well, but we have so much great stuff going on. So thank you to, not only to the staff and the kids, but the parents and the families who are supporting them. They're doing great things. Congratulations to all the students who were honored earlier. As Mrs. Purdy mentioned, not only is sight reading hard when you play an instrument, but it's also hard when you're singing. And we have some singers who received Allstate recognition who have do the same thing. So that's something to be lauded. I missed the ceremony earlier today at Baldwin. Unfortunately, I had to work. I'm gonna keep my job, but I heard great things about it. And one thing that really struck me from the time we moved here, about, I guess it was 13 years ago, when I heard about the new Baldwin as well, is that a new building is important, not just because of the shininess of it or because it's something different, but a lot of times, students internalize what they see around them. So people or students who are getting educated in a substandard or in that facility, which, you know, it could be better, they notice it. And when they travel other places, they see it, and they don't have what they need to have. So from that perspective alone, it's awesome that they have the opportunity to learn an environment that's worthy of them learning in. And finally, a lot of Osborne students are getting acceptance letters or accepting offers from colleges, and we don't hear a lot about that, including someone up here who's going to a school.
Not paying attention.
Congratulations. Those are great things as well. They should be celebrated. And one quote that I heard this week, and it was late at night, so it may have been on a TV movie, I don't recall, 'cause I'm up pretty late at nights, but the quote was something that said, something like this, "Education represents the winds upon which dreams fly." And I thought that was so, so powerful, because the education our children are getting here from K through 12 are gonna lift them up and guide them in their dreams as they go along. So thank you to everybody here who's contributing to that, and I wish I had seen this at all earlier, but thanks everyone for pushing behind us and putting the community in a place where we can get to the point of building a Baldwin and have these great accomplishments. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bushnell?
Thank you. I too wanna congratulate Cara Mills. It's really exciting when a school system can grow and nurture its own talent, when people will move from one area of responsibility and take on broader responsibility. Moving from an elementary school to a citywide school represents a step up in responsibility, and we're thrilled to be able to have talented professional people who are able to take on greater challenges. I was thrilled about the arts, but for me, whenever something happens with the fine arts program, I remember that sometimes it's important to say no, and that we successfully fought a previous superintendent who wanted to close down our strings program and to reduce our fine arts program. And all of those kinds of things have such great impact on a community and on the kids within it. It's why we all have to really give thought to the things that we do, because if we had done that, none of the things that happened tonight would have happened in the fine arts, and we wouldn't have the successful programs, and we wouldn't have been able to have touched the lives of these children and helped them to have been so successful. An arts background, a sports background, when people focus on extracurriculars, they tend to do better in their academics, and the arts are a precursor to success in college and success in life. So it's very exciting to see kids up here being awarded for their arts. Later tonight, we're going to, I hope, approve a budget. If we do approve a budget, I anticipate that it will include money for a program called Footsteps to Brilliance. Footsteps to Brilliance is an exciting program that will allow us to provide reading education for children in Manassas from pre-K till third grade. We're only going to implement pre-K through kindergarten next year, but this is something the likes of which we've never looked at before. It's a program which we are buying for the entire city, so that the kids who are in our schools, the kids who are home schooled, the kids who are in private schools, every child in Manassas will be able to participate in this reading program, will have access to our schools, will be able to improve their reading levels at their own speed and their vocabulary at their own speed. And I think it's one of the singularly most exciting educational innovations that we have considered in my lengthy time on this board. And finally, the groundbreaking was special. I was standing there today, and Mr. Albrecht and I were talking about how more than 10 years ago, we stood in front of Baldwin at one point, holding a sign that said, "Build a new Baldwin." And it took a long time to get everyone on the same page, but once everyone in the community got to be on the same page, we're moving ahead rapidly with a very good school, and we're going to be able to provide a much better location for our students, a much better learning environment than my kids had when they went to Baldwin and were in the bucket brigade that had to run rainwater from this classroom to the outside. So the distractions will be gone, but the talented staff and the wonderful children will be there. Dr. Kramp used a quote today at the groundbreaking that I thought was very pertinent. She said that a school is four walls that surround our future, and that is what our work here is about, that's what the school system's about, that's what the new Baldwin is about. The children are our future, and New Baldwin will be a great resource for them. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A sincere congratulations to all of our honorees this evening, certainly Mrs. Mills, and as Mr. Bushnell just said, it's great to see when we can promote from within, and in this case, actually have one of our fantastic leaders serve the entire community. So her current students will become her students again. The groundbreaking today really was special. Mr. Bushnell talked about standing out there. I can recall in 1999, hard to believe it's that long ago, when I first started thinking running for the board, looked at the condition of our facilities. There were people who said, "We'll never have to build another school. The city's built out." You know, and bucket brigades that Mr. Apt at that time was running through the school, what are we gonna do? And, boy, how a lot of things have changed, and I really do appreciate and respect the entire amount of community engagement we've had for the last several years, how we've all rallied together so that we can build not just four new walls, but increased capacity and increased opportunity for us to educate children the way we should. But now we can't stop and rest on our laurels and pat our backs, guys, because the people who said in 1999, "The city's built out," there's still people saying it, and it's still not built out, and we continue to grow, and we continue to have new development, and we continue to have increased needs for increased capacity. And this board's gonna be asking for a lot more community involvement going forward to what's our next round of schools gonna look like. I also, last week, we had the art exhibit over at the museum. It was fantastic. And previous to that, I was in Charlottesville at the state VSBA meeting. The governor's rep was there, the deputy secretary of education was there. And it was really a great conversation with the state funding of the SOQs. And we had a very interesting conversation where we actually challenged the governor and said, "The SOQs aren't the level you should be funding. They're the minimum, and realize that every locality has to significantly overfund beyond that. That is the bar that you can barely trip over to get in the door." Not that it will change anything there, but I think it really represents where the discussion and the conversation with education's going. I've often also said that graduating students from the high school to the unemployment line is a moral sin. I really do believe that, and because I say strong words like that, the governor's gonna start a commission. The Virginia Chamber of Commerce has also asked them to. So like Mr. Williams, who serves on a committee at the state level with the state Chamber of Commerce, we're gonna look at what opportunities are out there so that we can be better preparing our high school students for the workforce of tomorrow. And I think some of the things we're doing, Dr. McGorick and I were talking, Footsteps to Brilliance, and the things we're doing now, we are radically transforming education of the city. And before I stop, I noticed that the chair has a West Virginia tie on, and I did not wear a Kentucky tie. I didn't get the dress code.
We're up to nothing.
So, since Mr. Williams corrected me, this is probably inappropriately to, you know, to bet at George Washington, I'd like to suggest our next board meeting, the loser wear the other person's tie. Well, I don't want a short little tie.
That's excellent idea.
Boom! You know where I'm coming from there, coach? You know? The tail would be about this long. It's not that short. My neck's really fat.
You're assuming you're gonna lose there?
No, I'm not, but, you know, they are 36, 37 and 0.
36 and 0.
And you know what that means? They're due.
Are you done?
I'm done. All right. Believe it or not...
Did you accept?
I'll accept anything. I got you. Mrs. Besky was not done yet.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Chair.
But she did send me a note, and so I proved what she's gonna say here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and for giving me this opportunity. The student liaisons, I think, do an excellent job, and they're very vital, and their input is very important to us as a board, and this was something that we just started three years ago. I just wanted to remind students that the student liaison applications are due April the 1st. I wanna thank Mrs. Bennet for allowing me to go into Osborne High School today and talk to some of the classes about this, so that hopefully the students can put their applications in. It's a great opportunity for our students to gain leadership experience and to make sure our stakeholders are really, truly having a voice as well. So for anyone that's out there watching, that application you can find on the Manassas City school website, so please take a look. Please encourage your kids to apply. Like I said, it's all due to the school board clerk by April the 1st. Thank you.
And I hear it looks really good on college applications. Hint, hint.
Maybe.
Well, how else did she get in? Okay, I will be quick. Between the art show, the dedication of Baldwin today, the groundbreaking, today, you know, we had the mayor there, we had our state delegate there, we had the vast majority of the school board there, we had other city council members there, we had former city council member, Hareover, school board members, Dance, McGee, and Ilka Chavez. It's a great city. It's a great town. You all make it so, and I'm so proud to be a part of this, to where we can come together as one city. It says on the back of our new booster shirts, "One town, one team, one dream." And that's us, and I'm very impressed, and I'm just thrilled. The groundbreaking went off without a hitch today. Thank you, staff, everybody that was involved in that. It's just so nice to be able to go there, it's not what I normally do, but to go there and just tell them what, have them tell me what to do, and I do it, and then I go home. And it's all taken care of, and that's the way I expect the whole school to go. And I'm, like I told the builders today, you know, we're a very reasonable community. We only ask three things, that you be on budget, that you be on time, and that you be perfect. Other than that, we're very flexible. And the mayor said some very kind words about me, and I'd like, I'd like to clear that up. If I do a decent job at what these folks have appointed me to do, it's because of these folks and these folks. It makes it a very, very easy job. And Mr. Albrecht and Mr. Bushnell, I don't mean to continually tout you, but sometimes I have to. Growing up on the board with these gentlemen has made my job very easy. And again, and I say this about him all the time, and it gets old, I'm sure you're tired of hearing it, I'm tired of saying it, but the work he does at the state level, the time he gives up from his job to work in the state level for us is incredible, and that's leadership, and that's what I'm learning from. I'm never gonna do that, but I'm still learning from that, and I appreciate it very much. And Mr. Bushnell mentioned Footsteps to Brilliance, and it's a great idea, and it's his idea. He should've said that. He won't. He brought that forward. This is not a staff thing. This is a Mr. Bushnell thing, and I'm just so honored to be up here with these two guys and the other four board members just make my job very easy. So I appreciate what the mayor said, but it goes to all of us, staff, especially staff, and the board, and the previous boards. I appreciate it very much. And the first home game, well, it's scheduled for Thursday at Mets, but it's not gonna happen. It's gonna rain, and it's gonna make my life miserable, but get over to Mets and watch a baseball softball game and enjoy our new complex over there. It's very, very nice. I'm very excited for it. And I'm done. And we'll move to citizens' comments. I have no one signed up. Does anyone like, would anyone like to speak? Okay, wait one second, then, I have to read. "At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies, and affairs of the City of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda to keep, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here. We treat citizen comments as a public hearing, and we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your concerns should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please note that matters which are properly the subject of closed meetings, such as those related to the performance of school personnel or individual student concerns, may not be discussed during this time." Would you please come forward and give us your issue? Your name and where you live, and we got three minutes.
All righty. I'm Jennifer White Tree. I live on Magnolia Grove Drive. Sorry.
Okay, your time hasn't started yet, 'cause I can't get to it. Oh, you can start.
This is a scholarship for $75,000 to Rensselaer. My son earned this last spring. This is the notice we received, he received, from Rensselaer on Saturday, March 14th, that says, "Dear Alexander, your application filed for admission to Rensselaer's freshman class was never completed. Therefore, it's been made inactive. Please accept my best wishes for your future academic success." The missing information from the application was his official transcripts from Osborne High School and his test scores. This is the reason that the application is being considered incomplete. He was very, very diligent between October and January to put everything together that was needed for the application to the five schools he selected, including Rensselaer. He met all his deadlines, he turned in the necessary paperwork and payment, I wrote the check, to Osborne for the Career Center and the payment for the transcripts to all five schools that he applied to. He checked, he followed up, he confirmed mid-year transcripts were sent. He has no straight injury to the guidance department, and he did receive excellent help from Mr. Larry Gilligan to go through the process. When we heard that Rensselaer did not receive this paperwork, this was just horrifying and devastating news. He went to guidance the morning of Monday, March 16th, to find out what happened with the application, and it was determined the transcripts were submitted through Naviance, but they were not, they did not transmit electronically to Rensselaer. My understanding is the application format Rensselaer instructed him to use was not connected to Naviance. The submission electronically went nowhere. I have concerns about the system. Is this being used correctly? Do we have the adequate sets of checks and balances to follow up? Is there a proper way to identify when schools are not accepting the transmission from Naviance? Do we have a false security with the automatic transmission? Rensselaer was able to confirm that they do have a letter of recommendation from one of the math teachers at Osborne, Ms. Ann Kulikowski, but it is unclear to us how that letter even got there. We have reached out to Rensselaer and requested they accept the late submission of his transcripts and his scores. To this point, all they will say to us, we will take it into consideration. I don't have to say this, but for any family... Um, I don't have to say this, but for any family, college education is a major, major expense, and like most, we don't have $75,000 to throw away on a clerical error. He is graduating 10th in his senior class, he's got a 2.7 GPA, he's already been accepted to Virginia Tech, University of Virginia, and Colorado School of Mines. And he had, to date, and I emphasize "had," a very good shot at being accepted to Rensselaer as well. And like most families, final college decisions come down to scholarships, grants, financial aid, and the bottom line, not always first choices or dream schools. And I have been saying to him, "I'll help you do your part, you need to do your part, but we need to leverage all your options." And this is a huge, huge bow to his options and possibly his future. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Kim Noon, I live on Kylo Street here in Manassas.
Michelle Hudson, Windsor Avenue.
And we are co-presidents of Baldwin's PTO, and we were at the groundbreaking today and it was wonderful. I think I may have been waiting the least for that to happen because this is my oldest and alumni and at Mayfield now, so only five years. But we were just overwhelmed by how wonderful it went, how exciting it is, how excited the kids are about this. And we didn't get a chance to give everyone their Baldwin Spirit Ware today, so we brought it with us tonight to give to all the board members, so that's what we'd like to do. I have my assistant here now. Is that Mr. Damaria?
That's a fat one. Thank you, sweetheart. Nice. Thank you.
This is very nice, thank you very much, it was very nice to see.
Thank you.
We could argue which one it is. Just like I showed everyone in the Noddy, this is what they look like, wonderful. There's a variety in there, we, we mixed it up, so everyone's got a little bit of something.
I would point out the chair has something closer to Kentucky blue than West Virginia blue.
We like to call that Baldwin blue.
Blue and gold.
Blue and gold.
We like to call that Baldwin blue.
And look, it's extra fat. Thank you very much, somebody told you, didn't they?
Sizes are exchangeable, we, we can work that out.
Yes, I wish.
Thank you, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anyone else that would like to speak? No? Okay, thank you very much.
With adoption, the consent agenda is modified.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bushnell, second by Mrs. Sibeski, that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry 7-0. Dr. McGorick, the FY 2016 school board budget.
Yes, Mrs. McGuire?
Good evening, Chairman Damaria, school board members, Dr. McGorick. We have a brief presentation to highlight the changes in the budget from when the superintendent originally presented the budget on February 10th. This slide shows the five levels of the budget. In Munis, our budgeting system, we're able to track the request from the beginning of the budget process through the Level 5, which is the school board approved budget and what we are bringing you this evening. As you can see, we started at our first level, which those numbers came in in December at a school operating fund request of 104 million plus. Tonight, we are looking at proposing a budget at $93,37,683. This is a little bit more than what the superintendent proposed on February 10th, and we'd like to just talk about the few things that changed from that time. This slide summarizes those changes in your packet. You have a budget change sheet, which is in an Excel workbook that has numbers in it. But here, we did have to make some updates based upon the decisions made in, by the General Assembly in regard to the state budget, so those updates were made. Also, the General Assembly approved a different rate for VRS, those changes were made. In the superintendent's proposed budget, she had included a provision for a potential increase in health insurance of 5%. Fortunately, our insurance did not increase that much, so that adjustment was recommended. We also were able to move some amounts that had been included in the operating budget request to be covered from our federal grant fund. We made recommendations to adjust our special education regional program tuition and, as well as the associated state revenue for that program. And in the last budget work session, the board was, provided information on a way to expand our VPI program, our at-risk four-year-old program. We have had unused slots from the state program for several years, we've not had the facilities to serve these children. So, the Footsteps to Brilliance program, along with a blended approach to serving our VPI students, will allow us to expand the children served next year, and those items were added to the budget. Finally, a contingency was added in the event that we grow more than was projected, so if additional students come in, we need additional teachers next year. This slide is a slide from the Footsteps to Brilliance presentation that Dr. Saunders provided to the board back in January. As I mentioned, working with the State Superintendent of Public Instruction, our superintendent and Dr. Saunders, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, were able to work a way that we could use this program in conjunction with our vacant VPI slots or unused VPI slots to be able to serve more students as well as the community. Dr. Saunders will be presenting more information on this in, in the next meeting. The operating fund expenditures for the school operating fund total $93,37,683 for next year. Again, the majority of our costs are in salaries and related compensation costs for staff members. Those total about 83% of the budget for next year. This slide has been updated to summarize, the same slide was presented in the superintendent's budget, we just updated the numbers to show where the monies in the operating fund go by location. 76%, 76.6% is going to school-based direct costs. The other items are the various responsibility areas that are either staffed or managed centrally for, by various departments. This slide again is similar to what was in the superintendent's proposed budget, now updated with numbers. The school operating fund, $93,37,683. Our federal grant fund provides specific funding to support specific student populations, such as special ed, low-income families, ESOL, and some CTE funding, as well as some professional development for teachers. That is $3,421,667. And the food service fund, the amount is $4,262,826. In that fund, we plan to use some fund balance next year to do some improvements and replace some equipment in our cafeterias. Would point out that the food service fund is self-supporting in that the funds they collect through sales in the cafeteria and through the National School Breakfast and Lunch Program support the operations of the food service fund. The capital improvement plan for, for next year is on your agenda this evening, and this slide summarizes the projects that are planned for 2016. As people have mentioned, of course, Baldwin is part of our CIP, that's the 15 CIP, the year we're in now, but that will still be going on well through next year. This slide again is updated to reflect the final budget that the school board has worked on and shows the school of the total operating funds, the debt service fund, the capital project fund, and the total of all funds in the FY 16 budget is $110,783,544. In the budget, there is a proposed use of school board fund balance, as well as the, some of the fund balance in the food service fund. This slide shows the projected fund balance at the end of this year, well, it actually shows the, the actual fund balance at the end of last year, what we are projecting we will use this year, what the fund balance is projected to be at the end of this year, and then the projected use of fund balance for next year. And based upon all of these projections, your ending fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2015-16 would be $3,35,788 in your school operating fund and $725,799 in your school food service fund. These slides were in the superintendent's proposed budget and remain relevant. These are listing of needs that were justified and deemed to be needed, but unable to be met with our budget based upon our limited resources. This slide summarizes some personal position requests, and then this slide summarizes some non-personal requests and some programmatic requests. This is a snapshot of part of the budget development calendar, that part that occurred after the superintendent proposed, up until now, and shows what's next. You held budget work sessions on February 12th, March 3rd, and March 14th. You received public input at the meeting on March 10th, and we are here tonight where you would approve your budget. After this evening, the next major event on the calendar is to present to the city council at City Hall on April 8th. And that completes the presentation.
Thank you. Motion.
Chairman, I move the school board of the City of Manassas approve the FY 2015-2016 budget as presented in the amount of $110,783,544 and authorize the school board chairman to transmit these estimates to the city council of Manassas in accordance with the school board policy, state code, and joint budget planning agreement.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bushnell, second by Mr. Albrecht. Is there a discussion? No one? Mrs. Purdy.
Okay. On Slide 11, we, we talked about the listing of unmet needs, both from a personnel perspective, and then on Slide 12, we talked about unmet needs on a, um, non-personnel basis. And you heard comments earlier about the state level of funding at the SOQ level, and, you know, sitting there listening, I can see how it kinda comes across as very bleak. And yes, any, anytime funds are more available, there's a lot more that you can do, but to sorta kinda be the, the half-full kind of approach to life, when I look at some of the things that I've seen at the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school, and the intermediate school level, there's some incredible innovative thinking and talent and kind of this like can-do attitude that sort of makes up for the funding shortfalls. And so, you know, I, I don't want us to get so caught up in all of the unmet needs that we forget that there are really creative, talented, and innovative people, there are teachers and principals and guidance counselors and on and on and on, who are actually finding ways of getting enhanced educational opportunities to our students. And I, I think we're just gonna have to keep on tapping into that innovation, because, you know, if you look kind of what's going on in the bigger world, we at the little itty-bitty City of Manassas, we're connected to what's happening at the state, which is connected to what's happening at the national level, and revenues are just not growing. Our economy is improving, but it is not improving at the rate that people had projected. And so the amount of money that is being made available to finance public services is, is just not where we wish it would be. And so one of the things that, that we can do to kind of compensate for money that doesn't flow to where it needs to flow is to continue and encourage and provide support to, to that innovation that I see happening. Because as you saw, from the science fair students to the choral students to the instrumentalists, the guitar players, all of the kids you saw from high school, and we have a list just as long in each one of the, the other grades, good things are happening. So if we just kinda keep on that with, we're here to get to yes for our kids, we'll, we'll get past the, the tight budgets and, and we'll get to really good things happening. It's a tight economic situation right now, but we had the Baldwin groundbreaking. So just keep that in mind too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bushnell?
I have to follow up on what Mrs. Purdy said because in Manassas, we have a revenue sharing agreement with the city council, and the revenue sharing agreement allows us to plan on the amount of money that is available to us each year. In the absence of a revenue sharing agreement, we probably would have asked for another $4.8 million to cover the needs that we couldn't afford. The challenge that, that puts on the superintendent and the finance team is that they have to do more with less because they know at the outset how much money there is available, and it has been a good planning tool for us. But in its absence, these are the kinds of things that we would be asking for as additional funding from the city. If the revenue sharing agreement went away, we wouldn't miraculously ask for less money. I just want to make that very clear.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Mrs. Sibeski? Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, thank you. To expand a little bit on what Mr. Bushnell said, I have attended some of the city council's work sessions that are on the second floor of this building and, and not televised, but in that, the, over the years since the revenue sharing agreement was put together, the city has made carve-outs for levies to fund needs of the city, which then reduces the amount in the bigger pool that the, the schools can pull from. I very much appreciate the fact that our community wants to support public education and understands that their tax dollars do have to do that. I appreciate the fact that Mrs. Purdy's comments about the fact that things are tight, we know that they're tight locally, statewide, federally, all, at all levels. However, the state has made it abundantly clear in the last, at least the last three years, if not the entire time that I've been on this board, that public education funding in the state of Virginia will never return to where it once was. Our funding dollar amounts have gone up only because of the amount of students that we continue to enroll in our school system, not because the state gives us more funding. If localities wish to have good public schools, the locality will have to agree that they wish to pay for them. Doesn't ever mean that there's ever going to be enough money to do all the things that we want to do, nor do I think that high taxes are something that the citizens of this community would probably want. However, we do have to look at what needs are. And looking at these unmet, unmet needs, what I see is that, when you have a population that we do here in the city- we do here in the city of Manassas, that much research shows cost more to educate than other types of students, we are doing already on a very tight budget what some other school systems are not having to encounter. Asking our teachers to continuously and our staff to continuously do with less and less and work, just work harder and harder cannot continue to be the right answer. Staff will burn out, staff gets trained, and they will go to the other local school divisions, much like our police department is having the same problem with, where they will not mind working hard. People go into education because of their love of educating children, not because of the paycheck they may receive. But let's be honest, we all have to survive, and we all have our own bills to have to meet. So though I agree that this was what had to make things work this year, I think we must not lose sight of the fact that continuing year in and year out to ask our staff to do more and more with less compensation is not the correct answer, locally or statewide.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Mr. Williams?
I'll be brief. If you follow education nationally, we have a fundamental and systemic problem in terms of funding, which affects not only jurisdictions that aren't affluent, but affluent jurisdictions as well. And that problem's not going away, and until we as a country address that, we're going to see the trickle-down, so to speak, in our community. That notwithstanding, and I've lived lots of different places, we do an excellent job here. Thank you to the staff, and to the superintendent, and to the board for working hard to try to make it work. And I'm not saying, you know, we should be patted on the back for what we do, but you all do an awesome job, so thank you for giving us where we need to go. I mean, it's not perfect, and we have unmet needs, but if you look around even at jurisdictions close to us with far more money, they have far more problems and far more issues. So thank you for presenting this to us. I appreciate your work.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Robert?
Let me start with thanking Dr. McCormick for the transparency that this entire budget process has had. It's clear to understand, this is a complicated process, but you can look at it, and we're tracking from item to item what it is and where the money's being spent. And let me assure the taxpayers of this community, this board has executed a lot of due diligence reviewing things. To Mrs. Purdy's point of innovation, she's spot on. You know, one of my favorite quotes, and to paraphrase, it's from Albert Einstein, is insanity is doing the same thing and expecting a different result. We all have known for several years, we expect better, we expect the best in this community. And we're getting there, folks, and we're getting it because we are doing things differently. The budget you're seeing tonight, Footsteps to Brilliance, is just one of those kind of things. But a lot of things have happened in the years I've been on this board. My first year on the board, I had the privilege of serving on a committee that one of the architects of the original revenue-sharing agreement. We had 56.2% of all revenue was based upon the previous 10 years, and that says, that's looking at what Manassas was like in the '80s. We were a lot different back then, folks. Joe Johnson had a farm, and the cows sometimes got loose. We don't look like that anymore. The revenue-sharing agreement was revised a couple of years ago to account for the cities implementing a fire levy, and the share was changed to 58.6%. For the record, I am one, was one of two dissenting votes against that. It was a good idea when we did it. Personally felt at the time, it was not a good idea. This board speaks as one, this board is firmly in support of the revenue-sharing agreement. But our city council, in the meantime, that 4-cent fire levy is now four times that in the current proposed budget, with no additional money coming to education because of that. I'm not saying that money is the cause of everything. What I'm talking about is transparency, because the average citizen probably doesn't understand that. This board should be, you know, I want to commend my peers, we've done a great job working with what we have, working for what's right for the citizens of this community. This budget, and I think if you asked Mr. Bushnell and I several years ago if we ever thought we'd see a $100 million operating fund budget, we'd probably say, no way. But, you know, back when we had 4,000 kids, I never thought we'd have more than 7,000 either. So as I talked about earlier, this community continues to grow despite the fact people say we're built out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. What the heck, I'll say something, too. I hate to admit this, but I agree with everybody up here. I mean, this is a pretty smart board, and I'm very impressed. Not surprised, but impressed. And one thing we haven't tapped into is I also believe that the national attitude towards education is dwindling toward public education. There's too many politicians running on getting rid of teachers' organizations, and it's all their fault is the reason that the scores aren't as high as they should be, even though if you look at it over the history, the scores are about where they've always been. Our schools are great, especially here in Manassas, but across the nation. And I think it's a national issue to where people are voting for folks that want to cut education, and I think that's part of our problem as well, rather than just our city. I think our city's doing pretty darn good. I have a motion from Mr. Bushnell, second by Mr. Albrecht, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve fiscal year 2015-2016 budget as presented in the amount of $110,783,544 and authorize the school board chairman to transmit these estimates to the city council of Manassas in accordance with the school board policy, state code, and the joint budget planning agreement. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry 7-0. Thank you, everyone. We will go on to the CIP.
In your packet, you have the proposed FY 2016 to 2020 capital improvement plan. The primary change in this plan from the last time the board considered this, you did approve an initial plan back in January. Since that time, you have added one project to that plan in fiscal year 17. You have added $4 million for the relocation of the Gillum Fields. Along with that, and as required by the joint budget planning agreement, is a five-year forecast to forecast your sources and uses for the next five years. That forecast includes the capital improvement plan, the current debt service, anticipated debt service, projected operating funds and uses. And we did make one adjustment to this from the last one that the board saw. As far as our assumptions, we have changed the assumption for fiscal year 17 to increase it by one more percentage point, from 2% to 3% growth in the operating fund to facilitate the opening of Baldwin and related costs of any staffing changes and our other operating costs. We would recommend that you approve these items.
Mr. Chairman, I move the school board of the city of Manassas approve the FY 2016-2020 CIP and five-year forecast as presented and authorize the school board chairman to transmit these schedules to the city council of Manassas in accordance with school board policy, state code, and joint budget planning agreement.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bushnell, second by Mr. Albrecht. Is there any discussion? More observations, sir. Sir?
So a couple of us might have been perceived to be a little bleak a minute ago, and if you look at this five-year plan, I've seen them when we put them up here, that by year three, four, certainly year five, it's red. And that's not the case, and you can't see it on the chart, but we're looking, nor in front of us, but it's positive the entire way through. Dr. McCormick, our staff, and this board are committed to being good fiduciaries of the taxpayer's money, and I think that our planning that we've done well demonstrates that.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Motion by Mr. Bushnell, second by Mr. Albrecht, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve fiscal year 2016-2020 CIP and five-year forecast as presented and authorize the school board chairman to transmit these schedules to the city council of Manassas in accordance with school board policy, state code, and joint budget planning agreement. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry 7-0. Health insurance premiums for 2015-2016.
Yes, sir. This item is each year done at the same time or passed at the same time as the budget is. These are the health insurance offerings and the rates that would be paid by employees as well as the school board contribution for each plan. These were discussed with the board at your March 3 budget work session. We had placed a note on here and also indicated an email. Since that time, we've learned that provisions of the Affordable Care Act do require us to offer both the comprehensive and preventive dental offerings for each of the plans that we are offering. So we have more options, but aside from that, this is consistent with the option two, which is maintaining our current percentages and our current plan offerings for employees for next year. We would ask that you approve these so that we can go forward with our insurance renewal with the Virginia Local Choice Program.
Can we get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the insurance plans and premiums for 2015-16 as presented.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Sibeski, second by Mr. Bushnell. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I just want to make it known that though I work for one of the healthcare companies that provide health insurance, I in no way am affected by this vote or have any income from that.
Thank you. Mr. Robert?
Similarly, I will disclose that my spouse is employed by the city of Manassas Schools. We do not take our health care, and that employment relationship in no way impacts my ability to render a decision. You want to say what I said?
My spouse, well, no, not exactly, because we take our health care. But again, it's got nothing to do with my vote, so my spouse works for us, too. Anyone else? I have one more question for myself. The changes that you made from our last meeting to this, as far as having to give more choices, what is the budget impact of that?
There is no budget impact. The school board contribution would remain the same, pretty much, so there's no real change.
I thought so. I just wanted to hear it out loud. Did you say that earlier?
Yeah, but I put it in the email, too.
Yeah, I know you did. That's why I wanted you to say it aloud. I don't want you to say it aloud. I think I've got myself covered here. Any other discussion? Motion by Mrs. Sibeski, second by Mr. Bushnell, that the school board of the city of Manassas approves the insurance plans and premiums for 2015-2016 as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Can I get a motion for closed session? Mr. Williams?
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2, 3711. Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950, as amended for the following purpose. Part A, Paragraph 1, discussion regarding the superintendent's mid-year evaluation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Sibeski, that the school board of the city of Manassas enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711. Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950, as amended for the following purposes. Discussion regarding superintendent's mid-year evaluation. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry 7-0. Thank you all very much.